We're going to go ahead and get started with our budget meeting and welcome everyone that's in our City Hall chambers today and those that might be watching. This is the one year anniversary of the devastation and more, and I thought it would be appropriate this morning if we allowed Councilman Greenwell to give us some of the invocation. Councilman?
Thank you. Please rise. Our Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for all the many blessings that you bestow upon us. We also take this time to think back a year ago and the devastation that took place. While we don't understand why these things occur, we know you're always present with us during those difficult times, and we thank you for that. We keep in our prayers those who were injured as well as those who lost loved ones during the storms last year. We pray that you continue to be with them. We pray that for the guidance for the City Council and the Mayor and the City Manager and those coming before us today, that we take the information presented to us and with your assistance, make proper decisions for the benefit of Oklahoma City. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
And now the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now call the meeting to order, and there's very little of our typical business on the agenda today. We're going straight to the Finance Committee, convene as the Finance Committee.
Thank you. As a recap, this is the second of our Finance Committee meetings. Two weeks ago, we had presentations by police, fire, and IT. Today, we have presentations by Public Works, Utilities, and Public Transportation and Parking. And then in two more weeks, we will have three more presentations, and then in June, early June, we will propose the budget, or the budget's been proposed, but the budget would then be adopted. And so with that, we'll start with our first presentation this morning, and that's the Public Works Department, and we have Eric Winger, supported by J.C. Reese.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, and Council. I'm pleased to present the Public Works Budget for 2014-15 this morning. Some thanks to Paul Bronson and Mike Smith, my office, for helping pull together all the figures and the numbers, and also J.C. Reese and Shannon Cox for a lot of the presentation materials that you're going to see this morning. We've obviously had a host of staff as we put this together for you, and appreciate your continued support. One of the first things that as we look at our mission for Public Works into the next year, and this is a mission that is part of our Leading for Results Plan, is to provide the infrastructure construction, maintenance, private construction review, inspection, and emergency first response services to the public so that they can live and play in a safe environment. And so we really live that each and every day as we work on roads, bridges, and drainage matters across the city as we construct large buildings. Staff really does stand behind this as part of their work. The Public Works Department is composed of administration and six other divisions. Those are listed here in this kind of consolidated organizational chart. You'll see the divisions are Engineering, Field Services, the Oklahoma River Corridor, Stormwater Quality, Street Traffic Drainage Maintenance, and also Traffic Management. You'll find our budget on page 363 in the Proposed Budget Book, and this really is a summary of that section. You'll see each of the divisions down the left side of the page. You'll see that this year, we're proposing a $46.7 million budget and 400 total positions. Some of our most significant changes from last year, you'll notice there's about an $8 million difference in the totals from '13-'14 to '14-'15. And I think this is just as a reminder, as we've processed the general fund resurfacing projects for a total of $8 million, that was amended into our budget last year, which provided for the total of 54.6. Obviously, that has not occurred this year, so we are at the 46.7 number starting. There are five budget changes or five position changes that we have, and this is a summary of those. These are new positions. We have a Senior Project Manager in Engineering to help support some additional workload that we're seeing as construction activities increase in Oklahoma City. We have a new Civil Engineer to support our street resurfacing projects. Our Bond Program continues to accelerate, and one of the things that we continue to improve on is not just the street widening projects, but also the street resurfacing. The resurfacing projects are done in-house, and so we need additional support for that section. There's an Environmental Specialist for Stormwater Quality, and then there are also two new crew workers for our Oklahoma River Corridor. I'll explain those a little bit later, but these were currently part-time positions that we're looking to move to full-time. If you look at our budget as a whole and the percentages that go to each of those divisions, you'll see that our largest component is Streets Traffic Drainage Maintenance at 47% of the budget. Again, at a $47 million annual operation, you'll see the others, Administration, Engineering, and Field Services, along with Stormwater Quality also compose of those. But again, as a council priority, we do remain focused on our streets, the quality of streets, and making sure that we provide safe roadways for Oklahoma City. We reach out into the public more and more, and as we look at public meetings and as we tell our story, this is a new slide that we're presenting this year that really summarizes a lot of the different things that Public Works is responsible for. I think as we talked before, there's 733 signalized intersections that we maintain. There's 53 miles of drainage channel that are maintained. Now, that's out of 1,000 total drainage channel miles in the city of Oklahoma City. There's over 8,000 lane miles of streets. Of course, we cover over 621 square miles. And I think some of the other things is we sometimes forget, there are over 70,000 traffic control signs throughout our city limits. Obviously, large numbers for a large city, and Public Works takes the task making sure that we keep these in the best condition possible. I'm going to go into each of the lines of business and explain some of the projects and some of the funding as we kind of break down that budget into each of these. Engineering is obviously one of our more significant lines of business. It's one of our more significant divisions. This is the division that's responsible for the GeoBond Program, the Capital Improvement Projects, but we also do A&E contract negotiations, right-of-way acquisition, and technical plan review. There's a number of programs, including the 2007 Bond, the General Fund Resurfacing, and Project 180 that fall underneath this. There's 56, almost 57 positions at $5.5 million proposed in this upcoming year. When we look at the 2007 Bond Program, there's a $760 million total. I think that most of you are aware, but nearly $500 million of that is just in street projects at 136 locations. We're nearly 33% complete with the 2007 Bond. When we look at the $497 million, that breaks down into $143 million for residential resurfacing, $170 million for street widening, and $133 million for streetscapes. These are some examples of some of the work that's been recently completed. This is Eastern Avenue, one of our widening projects. It was a two-lane to a four-lane. It's I-40 to the city limits. It's substantially complete. It was also partially federally funded. This next one is some of our neighborhood resurfacing projects on Northwest 16th Street. This, again, was a part of the GeoBond. There's also intersection and traffic improvements. This is the intersection at Northwest 164th and Pennsylvania, which was recently completed. Then we have other street widening projects like Porton Avenue from Southwest 74th to Southwest 104th. This is, of course, in southwest Oklahoma City on the east side of the Royal Rogers World Airport, and of course, this is a part of the master development plan for that east We've been blessed to have council support for additional street work that's outside of the bond issue, which includes the general fund resurfacing. You know, for three years in a row now, $8 million per year has been approved, and it's been $24 million total. That applied to the years 2011, 2012, and 2013. This is an example or several examples of some of that work that was completed. Now, again, these are not listed bond projects, and so with those general fund revenues, we've been able to tackle some projects that just weren't conceived at the time in 2007, but really can't wait until the next bond issue in the next few years. And so we've got Hefner Road, Northwest Expressway to County Line, and the Liddwood Diagonal that you see here that have been resurfaced. We also have Southwest 44th and Memorial Road as well. Another large portion of the work that's done in the Engineering Division is a lot of the capital improvement projects, and I've mentioned some of the 2007 bond issue, but our CIP Division actually facilitates most of the building construction. And so you're going to see several projects related to the fairgrounds, parking garages, hospital. We also do parks and bridges as part of that division. This is some of the work that's underway at the Lincoln Park Clubhouse. This is a project that started on the left. You see the rendering of the work before it was underway. On the right, you can see that current status. This is expected to be complete later this summer. Next slide. This is the new police headquarters, and so this is just in west downtown on 700 West Colcord. Work is considerably underway, and I think as you noted last week, much of the steel is starting to be upright, and construction is well underway. This is a $21.9 million project that's expected to be complete next fall, 2015. This is a new police briefing station on 55 South Portland. It's nearly complete as well. It's expected to be complete later this summer. This is a $2.5 million project. Then we also have Fire Station Number 26 in southwest Oklahoma City at 119th and Rockwell. As you can see, it's substantially complete. This project was also about $2.5 million. It began in November of 2012. Then there's larger projects as we look forward, and this is the new downtown Oklahoma City Intermodal Transit Hub, and this is a rendering of that work. I know that we've presented on this before, but this is a project that is obviously significant and includes Project 180, MAPS III. There's federal participation along with city coordination. It's $28.4 million, and we're well underway with a lot of the planning that is going into that now. But this is, again, a project that is being managed by Public Works as we move forward into enhancing and updating downtown. The Fairgrounds Covered Arena, apologize for the darkness of the photo, but this is an arena that existed at the fairgrounds. It was an outdoor arena, but obviously, covering it at this point has allowed it to have an all-season surface, so protect it from rain. They're able to use it more than they have before. It was completed in late '13, and it was at a cost of $2.5 million. Moving into Project 180, and I know most of us are familiar with this, I just put this up as a reference. There's a downtown map on the right-hand slide or right-hand portion of the slide. The lower portion in the large green box is the myriad botanical gardens. All those blue roads are the ones that have been completed. The ones in yellow are under construction. That would be Package 6A. We actually are finishing up the plans and out to bid with Package 6B, which is identified in brown, and then we've also, in red, I'm sorry, and then 7, which is in brown, which is also anticipated to be bid this summer. So work is proceeding very quickly on Project 180, receiving a lot of positive comments from our downtown patrons with some of the changes that we've made in our project delivery method, working on blocks as opposed to large sections, making sure that we keep pedestrian safety and access available at all times during construction. These are some of the before and afters. This is Reno Avenue, obviously enhancing the amenity zones, wider sidewalks, new traffic signal upgrades, all these things that are continuing to enhance downtown. Other projects that we also continue to work on is the Main Street Parking Garage, which is located just to the south of City Hall. The rendering is on the left, and they've been very active. Obviously, they're getting ready to top out that building. It's expected to be completed this summer. We also are working out at the zoo at the new veterinary hospital and surgical suite. So there's a lot of activity, not just in the downtown, but as we look into the other areas of Oklahoma City, up into our District of the Zoo, this is expected to be completed in late 2014. We also have a host of smaller projects, but obviously very significant. This is the new improvements at Kitchen Lake Park at the boat dock, obviously providing additional fishing and recreational opportunities for Oklahoma City residents. This is some of that completed work. You can see as the landscape continues to grow in and some of the dock opportunities. Then we also have work, again, in southwest Oklahoma City at Woodson Park, and this is that work that's underway. So there's tremendous parks programs, I think as most of you are aware. There's a huge soccer complex that's going to be built as a part of the Woodson Park Bondi She project, and so that work is well underway. We also work on a number of bridges, and we do monitor bridges. We do inspect them annually. This is some work that was done at the Douglas Boulevard Bridge in repairing some erosion issues that were occurring around one of the headwalls. This is a vehicular bridge. We also do work on pedestrian bridges, and this is one in the Quail Creek area. This is another one that also showed significant erosion, and as you can see on the right, the repairs have been made to that bridge as well. So Leading for Results gives us the ability to track a lot of our performance measures and a lot of our progress, and one of the key measures that we have for our project management program is the delivery of the bond issue. We set a goal each year based on bond sales, and for the past several years, we've had a $70 million goal. Last year, if you look at the left side of this graph, you'll see that we actually came in at $64.5 million, just a little bit under that goal, but you'll see this year, we're actually on, or if not a little bit, over target at $73 million for the delivery this year. We'll continue to focus on the output of the bond issue, and again, that really provides for the majority of the street enhancements and a lot of the work that is underway across the city. A new measure that we added just a few years ago, one that I've put up on the screen now, is we also track cost as a part of construction. And I know that there were some concerns shared by the City Council regarding the number of change orders that were coming for your approval. We took that seriously and created a new measure where we set a target of 75% of construction contracts would not exceed 7% in changes. Now, that's change orders and amendments after contract award. You'll see last year, we were continuing to work on and struggled slightly with that goal, and we were coming in at 36%, but I'm happy to report this year, we've actually improved by 25 percentage points. We're up at 61% and approaching that 75% mark that we established. And so we continue to control costs. We've made changes to our construction contracts. We're continuing to provide training for our project managers, and so I think what we see is a real partnership with our public employees and our contractors in making sure that we deliver quality projects on time and on budget for Oklahoma City. Moving to our second division, and this is Field Services, and I think a lot of times we forget about the quality of construction. And one of the primary goals of Field Services is to inspect all of the construction that occurs in the right-of-way for Oklahoma City. Now, they do inspect public projects, but they also inspect those private projects that are built, that we accept once they're complete. And so you see a couple of those construction photos here, just a lot of the work that, whether it includes construction inspections, we also have the surveying, that we also do a lot of that in-house. One of the measures and things that they also track is the number of utility cuts. These would be the repairs to streets that occur after maybe we have water line or sewer maintenance, the number of utility cuts that are completed within 30 days, and we set a goal of 80%. You'll see that last year, we were able to hold about a 73% achievement on that, and we're right around 74% this year. Significant numbers, we do about 900 repairs a year coming down to this when we talk about water and sewer maintenance type issues that occur in our roadways. So obviously, a goal that we will continue to track and we're still working to improve. Our next division is the Oklahoma River, and I've mentioned this, and this was not a division of ours a few years, but as we continued to develop and grow the Oklahoma River, our needs have increased. And so as I proposed the two additional positions to go into this section, this is to address the ongoing maintenance and upkeep of all the activities that are there in the Boathouse District and are starting to actually move west. And so at a budget of $1.7 million, we have seven positions, and the majority of the work that you see here is being done by street maintenance. The Oklahoma River Dams, as you know, there are three, require a lot of maintenance. You'll see one of the boat locks on the right-hand side of this photo, but we are continuing to step up our maintenance and our proactive maintenance activities. The cylinders that actually actuate those dams and those gates are being replaced on a more regular schedule. We're reducing the downtime of the river and making sure that the river is full unless it's scheduled maintenance. And so that, those are things as we work towards bigger events, I think as most of you know, there are some world championship events scheduled later this summer in the eastern basin. We're just making sure that we're ready for all those when they get here and occur. We continue to remove debris from the river. We have a host of boats and specialized equipment, like the one that you see here, that actually has a conveyor belt that pulls that litter and some of that debris out of the river. We have several crew that work on this, and fiscal year 12-13, we removed over 240 tons of debris out of the river. For '13-'14, that number has increased over 350 tons of debris. And again, these are everything from styrofoam cups to large logs. And so again, as we beautify the river corridor, we're needing to increase our services in that area. This is a new riverboat that we purchased this last year. Now, it was purchased with insurance proceeds, and fortunately, it was in the river at the time of the storms on this very day last year. It completely destroyed the boat, but this is one that we use to service the dams, and it's a primary vehicle for a lot of our river crews, and so this is a new piece of equipment that we've added to our inventory. And then I show this photo just as the river racecourse improvements and the MAPS Street Projects continue to accelerate, whether it's the night racing lights, whether it's the new zip line, whether it's the new proposed boathouses that are going to be constructed, the other activities along the river. The River Corridor Division is the supporting structure to make sure that all of this can happen, and so we continue to look for ways to improve. We, of course, appreciate your continued support as we make this a vibrant area of downtown. Moving on to Stormwater Quality, these are some of the major areas of focus for that division, environmental water quality, of course, household hazardous waste and our household hazardous waste facility permitting public outreach. The budget proposed for this division is 3 point, almost $3 million and 28 positions. We look at our household hazardous waste facility. It's, of course, located at southwest 15th and Portland. It's open Tuesday through Saturday, open to the public. We also have several MOUs with other municipalities, Edmund, The Village, Yukon Shawnee, Moore, El Reno, War Acres, Bethany, and also Tinker Air Force Base. We have two specialized collections each year, but it's amazing the amount of household hazardous waste that we're able to take out of the waste stream and keep out of the landfills. Some of those statistics, in 2013, we had over 8,400 participants and collected over 635,000 pounds of waste. And again, this is waste that did not make it to a landfill. About 17,000 pounds, and we have a recycling center out at our facility. If you do drop off waste or waste oil, you can go into that store and you can actually pick up almost new products for free. And so if you have a pesticide or a paint or some other chemical that you'd like, you can visit that and take that with you. But two special waste events a year. Next slide. This is the last one that we had in April of 2014. We had over 330 pounds of medication recycled, 48,000 pounds of tires, 400 pounds of ammunition, 20,000 pounds of computers, and it amounted to about 70,000 pounds total for that event. But again, we continue to work to make sure that we provide a green environment for Oklahoma City at events like these in our household hazardous waste facility. Public outreach is also significant. This is Wayne Drop. He visits a number of elementary schools in Oklahoma City. We typically focus our efforts on pre-K through 6. In '13-'14, we reached out to over 2,200 students, and in '14-'15, we've secured agreements with 17 schools, and we expect that we might hit a number of 5,000 this year as we outreach to those students. But he teaches recycling efforts. He makes sure that, we make sure that we teach them at a younger age to not dump and do things in the storm sewers and grass clippings and all those things, and so catching them early is definitely a goal of ours. Our next division is Streets Traffic and Drainage Maintenance, and obviously, again, as I mentioned, this is our largest division. It's the one with the most employees, as you'll see here, with over 200 employees, mostly crew, and of the largest budget, $22 million, but they are responsible for street maintenance, traffic operations, drainage, and graffiti removal. Some of the other things that the division is responsible for, I think, is we kind of talk about snow and ice, obviously a large activity for them, response to wind, hail, floods, and then also tornadoes. So they're an emergency first responder to a number of events. We continue to track the condition of our streets here in Oklahoma City, and this is by citizen survey. And we set goals where the national average currently is 37%, and that was in 2012. You can see we're currently at 35%, and we note a small dip from last year at 38%, and this is based on citizens. And so as that annual survey goes out, we ask them what their, what their position is on the quality of city streets. Now, we think, and I will show you this next slide in just a minute, sorry, let's go back one, J.C., it's not there. What we think is the number of construction projects that we have underway, we know are inconvenient, just like Project 180. It causes some temporary inconveniences until we can get those projects either resurfacing or widening completed. We think as we complete more projects, we're going to see the number swing back up. The reason I mention that is the PCI's in Oklahoma City, and that's the Pavement Control Index numbers are continuing to decline every year for the last three years. Our average in fiscal year 12 was a 61, and as a reminder, the PCI, it's on a scale of 0 to 100, 100 being a new street and 0 being basically no street or a dirt street. So we are averaging a 61. Two years ago, we picked it up to a 62. In fiscal year 14, we're now at a 64. So we continue to see increases in the pavement quality. I know there's a small dip in the citizen satisfaction, but we really believe over the next year or two, as we complete more projects, that will come on up. Street maintenance, and these are some of the activities, base repair, crack seal, micro surfacing, multiple activities that cover the 600 square miles of Oklahoma City, and this is some of those activities underway. So when we talk about base repairs, base repairs are those type of repairs when we have pothole on top of pothole type situations, and we have repeat callbacks where we'll send crews out and they'll actually cut out and replace an entire section of street. Our micro-surfacing program is the activity that you see in that upper right-hand photo. That is a complete, a complete seat, street sealing process. We do approximately 80 miles of micro-surfacing each year. You can see pothole patching in the lower left, and you'll see a lot of our rural road and drainage maintenance in the lower right. As a part of our pothole program, we work to make sure that 80% of pothole repairs are completed within three days. We do have a pothole hotline at 631-1111. You'll see that we continue to strive for that 80% goal. We were 79% last year. We're currently running at 77% of potholes are repaired within three days once we receive that notice. Traffic maintenance, and we talk about signal replacements and striping is another key performance item for our street division, and here you see some of the work that's underway in replacing signals. This happens to be some of the damaged signals that followed the May tornado of 2013. This machine that you see on the right is a long-line striping machine. We continue to apply new striping to a lot of the city streets that need, need updates. Traffic management is also known as traffic engineering. It's the last division I'm going to present to you this morning. 15 positions at a budget of $1.5 million. Their primary focus is, of course, traffic movement in the city, and the major program that we've been initiating over the past several years is the Intelligent Traffic System, the ITS implementation. It's nearly complete. It will finish in this upcoming year. It's going to have affected over 750 intersections, and that's complete hardware updates. It's allowed us the ability to communicate with all of our intersections wirelessly, so we sometimes get advance notice of an intersection in trouble before we get that citizen call, but it has also provided an opportunity for us to corridor 18 streets where we've improved commuter times. Next slide. This is a map of the ITS program as it's being implemented. Everywhere you see a red triangle is one of those 750 intersections that's been, or is going to be updated within the next year. The lines, the colored lines that you see that run north, south, or east-west, those are the 18 corridors that were previously identified by the City Council, and I think we've used the example of Claussen. We were able to reduce the commute time on Claussen Boulevard by about a minute and a half from Interstate 44 to downtown. Now, we are receiving a few complaints that I'll share with you, and some of the side streets unfortunately have to wait a little bit longer as that corridor is clearing, and we're trying to see what opportunities we have to reconcile some of those. But again, as we improve traffic flow for commuter traffic, and that would be mostly in the AM or in the PM, we are seeing some additional delays maybe on the side streets, but it's very temporary.
Unfortunately, we can't, every time there's a green light, there's a red light. And so 50/50% of the time, we can't eliminate that percentage. We've worked on it, but we, it's still 50/50. And so because of that, when we have, you know, we're trying to get those green lights on the majority of the traffic, and Eric's right, we're getting a few complaints from some people that have slightly longer waits on some of the side streets, and we're trying to work through that process.
So this will be my last slide to present this morning, and we can go into questions. So as we look into 2014-15, and as we look at our history in Public Works, we put together just a small snapshot of some of the things that we'll do. We expect that we'll repair about 80,000 potholes this coming year. We have about 17 lane miles of new roadway that will be constructed, 20 miles of new sidewalk. We'll review nearly 400 sets of plans this year. You know, that average is almost sometimes one and a half to two a day. It's pretty aggressive in Oklahoma City at the moment. We'll have over 1,100 oil, gas well inspections. We'll complete about 70 million in 2007 Bond projects, 30-plus million in our CIP, and we'll complete over 32,000 inspections of work in the public right-of-way. So with that, I appreciate your time. Be happy to respond to any questions that you might have this morning.
Yeah, Pat, I'll start with you. David, you can be next.
First of all, I want to compliment your department and the fine work they do. Your ability to communicate with our citizens is really extraordinary. I appreciate that. I've got a couple of questions. On the 73 or 70,000 traffic control signs that you all maintain, are those, do they include speed limit signs?
Those would be all of our regulatory signs, so the answer is yes.
Okay. Do we have a procedure in place to regularly inspect speed limits or look at speed limits to make sure they're proper for the kind of development we have?
We sure can, and we do receive requests. I wouldn't say that it's weekly, but from time to time, where residents have the ability to also call in and ask for a speed study be done in their area. I'm committed to yes, we will absolutely do that, but we're also responding to citizen requests as well when they ask.
So you've got a two-pronged program?
But we don't have it whether, we just randomly go out and evaluate. It's generally generated by a citizen complaint or business complaint.
We respond rather than be prepared.
Yes, sir.
The second question, Eric, is on drainage maintenance. The concrete canals and channels we have all over the city are maintained pretty regularly. They take the brush and trash and whatever out of sight. In a lot of the areas we've had, at least in Ward 8, recently developed, we rely on natural drainage paths, which environmentally very much be desirable. But do we have any program to inspect those facilities?
So there's obviously, there's about a thousand miles of drainage channel that are in the city, and we have only about fifty miles of easement where we can actually go in and do public inspections and public improvements. So on those channels that are concrete and those that have easements, and not all of the public channels are concrete, but all those that are concrete, we do monthly inspections on most of them. On the private ones, I will tell you again, from a citizen response, we will respond to any citizen that has a complaint regarding a channel that's located on their property. In some cases, we'll find that maybe we can provide a limited amount of maintenance. If there happens to be a city bridge or some sort of a city drainage structure that has a partial easement into a private facility, we can maintain around that public portion. But most of the channels, unfortunately, are private, and there's very little that the city can do.
I think this is an area where we need to do some education on the homeowners associations that are charged with that maintenance, what that maintenance entails. We have a restriction that's pretty well adhered to about building permanent structures and those things. But as far as maintaining it as a functional drainage system, I'm not sure we're doing a good job on that. Anyway, I've had that argument before. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you, Councilman.
Eric, earlier this week, we were discussing some issues, and you indicated the high number of calls you received last year with respect to drainage issues. Could you talk a little bit about that, how abnormal it was this past year?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think 2013 was a record year for Oklahoma City when it comes to storm and storm damages, flooding, and other just emergency response activities. Obviously, on May twentieth last year, we had the May twentieth tornado. But on May thirty-first, and two additional events that occurred into the summer of 2013, we had three rain events that, two exceeded the five-hundred-year storm, and a third one nearly touched the five-hundred-year storm. And these are significant rain events in Oklahoma City, where the intensity of the rain is so much that it causes flash flood and major flood conditions. The reason I say that's significant, we will, on average, receive about a hundred drainage complaints a year, and we're committed to following up with each and every one of those. We'll contact the individual owners or whoever contacted us. We'll research the issue, and in cases that we can apply city resources, we can, and others, we'll advise them privately. But last year, we received, just in a short period of time, over three months, four hundred drainage complaints from about May until about October. So city staff was extremely busy. The engineering division and the technical review division, who were responding to all those, we actually were not able to wrap most of those up until this past spring, just due to the amount and number of complaints that came in in such a short amount of time.
And then a follow-up question. With the beginning of this calendar year being somewhat drier, we may get into a situation where we're experiencing more drought-type conditions, and then that leads to other types of problems, not drainage necessarily, but the breakdown of water in sewer lines. Is the soil condition moist enough to where it will get through the summer without significant problems, or could that change very quickly and we're back to where we were, say, in 2011 and 2012 with a high number of water breaks?
Honestly, I think it's too early to speculate, and I honestly just don't know the answer to the question. We have seen a few line breaks in the past week. There are inherently just a number of breaks that occur on any given year. I don't know that we've seen 2013 was probably a lesser year than 2012, but for 2014, as we look into this summer, I think it just really does depend on the weather. I just really couldn't forecast. I just don't really know.
And final question with respect to that. There appears to be certain areas within the city that are more likely to experience line breaks. I might use a term like there's faults or something beneath the surface that contributes to shifting of soil and things like that. Can you talk briefly about that? Are there areas that are more prone to having water line breaks?
Yeah, I think, just my basic home is going to be, I think there's just an aging infrastructure, and I think a lot of times, we see a lot of the breaks just on our older systems. But again, I think Marcia Slaughter, Director of Utilities, probably better respond to that and possibly.
I think she'd like to mention something.
There's a couple of times a year when we have those issues. One is when, during cold weather events, when you get frost that goes in the ground, you get a few, but most of them is when the frost comes out of the ground. And so it isn't really when you get the really cold weather, it's when you get the thaw after the really cold weather is a time where we see a number of breaks. And then also in the summertime, in very hot, dry weather, we come in and there'll be some underground shifting. You know, even some of the people say you should, you know, water your foundations to avoid, you know, structural problems on your residential house and such. Of course, that doesn't really fall well into our water conservation plan. There are some recommendations along those lines. And the breaks vary, obviously, to the age of the water mains, but probably more of a factor is the type of soil. If you've got a real heavy clay-based soil, you know, it has a different reaction to those weather climates than a more sandy, a sandy or silty type of soil.
Just a quick question, and I'm not sure my math is right, but Eric, I think you said we were about thirty-three percent complete with 2007?
Yes.
My recollection is that during the 2008, nine economic period, we weren't able to sell the total amount of bonds that we had anticipated. So it looks like this program may extend a little bit longer than the ten years that we had forecast originally.
Yes, that is going to be correct. And so, you know, the city has, as a policy, established a mill levy to not increase, so that we don't increase the tax to our Oklahoma City residents. And the only way that we can sell bonds is either through debt retirement or through increasing valuations of property. So we are working, and obviously, finance and budget work very closely with us every year, but the projections for the next several years are not as high as, say, the past few years. And in '09, there was obviously a significant dip in the economy that caused a smaller sale.
Yeah, just, last sale was in December, or last election was in December of '07, and was anticipated to be actually a nine-year, seven to nine-year, and it's going to be over ten. We did pass a resolution a few months ago regarding the softball Hall of Fame, that we would anticipate that an election would be done in December of seventeen, even though some bonds may extend into eighteen. And we would have years where there would be probably some seven and some seventeen bonds sold. And we did that with '07 and seven. For, we had a couple of years, there were some leftover two thousand bonds that we put out with some seven authorizations, because we had some different pushing priorities on that. So although we don't anticipate that all the bonds will be sold by December of seventeen, right now, and this is not staff decisions, it's a policy decision of council, but it anticipates that maybe December of seventeen would be the next time for a GO.
I do think it's important to just point out that sometime, we do have overlapping years, though. We had two thousands that overlapped with '07s.
Yeah, and we have done that before.
And I think, as Jim mentioned, we won't finish the '07 and seventeen. It's going to extend a few years after that.
Well, one, maybe a little more.
Got Larry?
Quick question, somewhat related. We were talking about these big occasions that occurred when we had flooding, like last May, and some of the neighborhoods in my ward have, there's quite a bit of confusion over the relationship between FEMA and Oklahoma City and hundred-year flood planes and what can and cannot be built where. What advice would you give as to getting that information out to areas that think they have some questions about that?
Yeah, I would tell you that each of the individual homeowner needs are probably individual to them, and so it's probably best if city staff could visit with them based on their property and their concerns. So if they would visit the Oklahoma City website at OKC.gov, follow the links to the Public Works Department, our contact information is online. Would ask that they just contact us directly so that we could work through any questions or issues they might have.
Thank you, sir.
The unlisted bond budget, where are we there? Are you more or less concerned than a year ago?
So when we look at the unlisted 2007, I would say that we have the same concern, but it has not increased. So the concern is, is that the amount expended out of the unlisted exceeds the amount of completed projects, but it hasn't grown. So it would be at the same level. We're really managing the unlisted funds very, very carefully, making sure that we're prudent in bringing those to council for approval only after we find that that's the last resource for us to approve funding.
Any other questions, Eric? All right, Eric, we appreciate you and your staff's work. Next up, utilities.
I appreciate the commercial.
Marcia Slaughter is coming up. Debbie Regging is assisting host of presentation, and we've got Bert Windard, Business Manager or Assistant Director for the Utilities Department, and Billy Little, and Sam Smandy.
And the financial management staff, all of whom helped put these wonderful presentations together. And I'm very pleased to be here with you this morning, representing your water, sewer, and solid waste utilities. The department, of course, pardon me, the department's budget is on page three hundred and eighty-three or three hundred and eighty-nine of the PDF version of the document. This morning, I'm going to begin by telling you about our leading-for results goals, how we're implementing some of those key measures and initiatives that are underway to improve our performance on some of those measures or create new performance items. Well, I'll describe our funding sources, which all come from utility rate revenues, water, sewer, and trash bills that are paid. I'll describe then the operating budget briefly and the capital program for this fiscal year. Our LFR goals center around five topics: a safe and reliable workforce, reliable service to customers, regulatory compliance, strong financial management, and environmental stewardship. Our first LFR topic is safe and qualified workforce. We've been working since the beginning of time on keeping employees safe, and in recent years, we've made some progress ratcheting down the number of injuries we suffer on the job. We're currently at an injury rate calculated at nine point three percent. We're making progress. We're setting new targets for eight percent in the coming years, and long-term goal is less than six percent. Succession planning became a large issue for us a few years ago when we realized that by now, a third of our management team could be retired with twenty-five years' experience from the city of Oklahoma City. A key part of succession planning is creation of a program called Utilities University, which I'll describe in all detail. Well, thirty, between thirty and fifty people will, at the beginning of calendar year fifteen, actually complete the Utilities University program. We started in fiscal year, in fiscal year 2012, we were, pardon me, fall of 2012, we hired Metro Tech to help us with most of the training. We offered training in technical fields related to the utilities business, like the financing, how we're financed and funded, how to operate a water treatment plant, because licensing is a part of the many things that are required of our employees to work in our industry, how to be effective, workplace competency, how to behave. A broad gamut is helping us a great deal, and we're finding that we have great buy-in from the folks who are participating in the overall mission of the Utilities Department. We're very excited. Service reliability is measured in a number of ways. I'm not going to touch on all of these because they're all long-term programs for us. We're repairing about seventy-three percent of water main breaks in seventy-two hours or less. We've upped that goal, the goal was seventy percent, we've upped it to seventy-five for next year, because we know that we can make progress. About eighty, we completed about eighty-six percent of the capital improvements on the timeline that we adopted when we approved the capital construction contract last year. And I think that says ninety-two percent in your budget book, but unfortunately, one slipped in the meantime. The eighty percent of solid waste routes are, the solid waste, weekly collection routes are completed by five PM each day. We want to make that better. We set the long-term goal at ninety-five percent, and we know that from experience that what we need to do is reroute solid waste weekly collection days and routes in the fast-growing areas of the city, in mostly the rural wards. We'll see that these efforts are underway. We'll be doing this when the demand for solid waste services drops off, as it typically does when your yard goes brown. So sometime late this fall, early this winter, we'll be coming through to reroute solid waste. We use the same process we did a few years ago, and we accomplish the same thing. Makes a big difference, and we absolutely expect that this is the solution to completing work earlier in the day. Regulatory compliance and financial management are both important to us. We're maintaining Aqua and OCS AAA credit ratings and working every day to meet regulations. We do that very well, and it is very important to us and our credibility with our customers. A key thing, though, in financial management for the Water Trust is, is a cost-of-service study. So what a cost-of-service study does is assign service costs to customers based on the class of the customer, because customers have different use patterns, and therefore, different actual costs of service. We recalculate the volumetric charges, that is, the cost per thousand gallons, and also base charges, user fees. It's an important study that these are typically done every ten to fifteen years by water utilities, and it's been that long for us. We're looking at potentially a variety of fees. We'll be discussing that with the Water Trust, moving toward a new rate ordinance for the water and waste for our utility in the next several months. The interest is that in this process, we're looking at inclining block rates, something to present as an option, something we haven't pursued in the past, because we know that a volumetric charge that increases based on the total volume of water used does help increase conservation. It's one of the tools in the water conservation toolbox nationally. We have also considered in this study the effects that water conservation may have, those inclining block-style rates and the overall water conservation program may actually decrease water use. And so we're planning for that in terms of the impact on our total income.
So let's just stop and talk about that for a second, because I think this is really a key, and it's really a large policy decision for both the city and the Water Trust as we go forward. Obviously, we've had some, not last year necessarily, but the previous years before that, we had record droughts, and it was significant. A couple of things we've done is we've gone into year-round water conservation program, which is the odd-even method, and we're in that for the long run, and that seems to be working well. It seems that when we do it for a few days at a time, people kind of double up to the watering efforts on the odd days, and it seems to be working out. We're also doing more education to have alternate types of landscaping that are out there to try to draw down a lot of landscaping that are heavy water users. But the water rates, I think, is something significant. As we're going forward, as, I think, we all know, going toward a long-term water source, more heavily dependent upon southeastern Oklahoma. That's for a couple of reasons. One, because western Oklahoma is drying up. It just is. There isn't a dependable water source that we've had out of the North Canadian River over the last century. It just isn't coming, the flow isn't coming down. There's a number of reasons for that, but, you know, a great example, if you don't think that's true, is Lake Optimus, sitting out there in the Panhandle, has never had any water in it. When they did the engineering studies in the sixties, they thought it was going to hold water, and they built it, and the flows have decreased, so it doesn't happen. And our yield of the North Canadian River is less. Therefore, we have to have more reliable down on the southeastern part of the state. That includes procuring the water in service, and we all know that we're diligently working to get that as a long-term supply. But there's going to have to be some long-term capital improvements that are associated with that. Amongst those is another parallel water line from Lake Stanley Draper down to Lake Otoka, along with some water lines to get the water from the Kiamichu River Basin over into Lake Otoka for our long-term uses. It's hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars, and we've got a large water basin. We're probably set to have to handle that, but there's going to have to be some rate increases on the water side to accommodate that. But one of the things we're doing along that is to have residential water rates that is called inclining block, which Marcia mentioned, so that if you choose to use outside watering, we're okay with that, you're just going to pay more. And it's going to be based upon a number, and there's a couple of ways to do that. It could be two blocks, it could be one block. But basically, the intent is that you're, we'll have a lower rate for your base domestic water consumption, and then we'll have a higher rate for over seven, eight, nine thousand gallons. And so that's typically for the outside water usage, and there will be a premium paid for that. So that does two things for us. One, it may provide us some additional revenue to help pay for those additional capital improvements. And secondly, hopefully, it'll be a deterrent, so it'll pass that, push that peak off longer, so that we're able to control that peak the best we can.
And again, it's a study that's underway that will be very important, for which we are still churning numbers, not yet complete, but we'll have policy options that perhaps will be different than we presented for you in the past. Environmental stewardship is, I believe, the last goal. I want to mention to you that the compressed natural gas fueling facility opened for solid waste, where I have the ability to connect fifty-six trucks to refill overnight and a commercial operation if you have a CNG vehicle and want to fuel. We're at one-one-five-oh-five North Portland. We've transitioned about half of the fleet that can be transitioned to CNG vehicles, and those are vehicles for which using CNG will pay for itself over the expected life of the vehicle. of the vehicle. The, pardon me, the additional costs for installing CNG motors will be paid for by the savings in CNG during the left vehicle. Notably, our solid waste trash trucks, the weekly collection trucks, which are about forty to fifty thousand dollars more expensive for CNG, they use enough fuel that the CNG conversion is worth it because CNG fuel is so much cheaper, we can pay for those, pay that back in five years, to give you an example. We also reuse, environmental stewardship includes reuse of treated wastewater. We sell two point three billion gallons of treated wastewater, that's about eight percent of all we'll produce this year, to power plants and a golf course. The water conservation program is up and running and has been for quite before this entire year. Draw your attention to squeezeeverydrop.com. It's the place where you can find information of all types about what to plant and when to water, and what the rules are for the conservation program. We are concerned that the drought, on the left side of the screen, you see the drought forecast for the coming months, and it's not pretty. Even though we're expecting normal rainfall for the next couple of months, we're not expecting things to get better in western Oklahoma particularly. When we were talking this time last year, we had a gully washer storm that refilled Lake Hefner. We're very grateful to have it. We'll get that again. This year remains to be seen, but we're in good shape moving forward. The, and the reason I mention that is it's possible that we'll move during this very hot summer from the current every-other-day outdoor use to two days a week or even one day a week, depending upon how the drought continues for us. We never know until the spring rains are over and the summer hits. We know it's going to be another hot summer. Councilman Greenwell asked about main breaks. We are prepared for a large number of main breaks because we're expecting a hot, dry summer. That does have an impact. It's not the whole story. Last winter, we had a flurry of main breaks in other parts of the city because of dry soils and cold weather. So those things just, they do happen. We expect a normal break rate of about fifteen hundred to sixteen, seventeen hundred repairs a year. In 2011, we saw about seven hundred in a couple of months, to give you an idea of the change.
Let's go back to the lake levels for a minute, because we're going into the summer season, how are the lake levels as we go forward? As we sit today, McGee Creek is actually into the flood pool or right about the flood pool.
It is.
It's full. Etoka is down seven, eight feet.
Yes.
At this point in time, not terrible at this time of year. Hopefully, some rains this week will help bring that up. And Lake Draper, which has been down over the last several years because we intentionally drew it down because we were doing rehabilitation on the pump station, we've been able to bring that back to a very high level, probably higher than it needs to be, but it'll go down as the season progresses. So the southeast supply is in pretty good shape. Western supply, not quite as good. Hefner is down, if you've driven by, eight feet. We were able to put a little bit of water into it a week or so ago. Overholster's down just a couple of feet, not bad, but we don't have the backup, because when we took the drawdown from Canton last year, which we did to refill a Canton, when we had the heavy rains that we had in the spring of last year, they were all downstream of Canton. It just howled what rains, rains fell. And so where we were getting pretty flush water down here, they weren't getting anything to Canton. So Canton is still down eleven, twelve feet at this point in time.
It is.
And so that, that'll be a challenge for us. We really could use some more water. Really, our need is more in the western part of the state than the southeastern part of the state at this point.
Yes. The last point, we're opening a zerescape, which is the water conserving plants, a garden built with water conserving plants. We're opening a zerescape demonstration garden on Thursday at OSU OKC. The Oklahoma State University Extension Services helped us a great deal with information for citizens about, about drought-tolerant plants and best wiring practices, and will continue to do that for us. There are field enforcement people driving those cute little white cars with the blue decorations on them. You'll see them in neighborhoods that particularly concentrate on those where water use is high in the summertime. Operating budget totals, ninety-seven point seven million dollars and seven hundred and sixty-two.
Marcia, before you go into the operating budget, I'd like to make a comment about the conservation policy. One of the things that the council, individual council people can do to help us in that regard is, I don't know whether my experience is the same as others or not, but occasionally, when I'm talking to a neighborhood association or a homeowner association, they say, "When are you going to do something about the rationing?" And I always say, "It's not rationing. It is never going to change. It's conservation." We've, we're shifting the paradigm from where we were to where, to where we need to be for the future. And so I think if that message, you have the opportunity, if everybody around the torch, you have the opportunity to take that message to neighborhood associations and homeowner associations, that would probably be helpful, because we're probably never going back to a situation where you can just water anytime you want to regardless. We're probably, this every-other-day thing is probably a permanent thing, and it may get stronger as we move forward, but, but we're probably not going to go back to another situation. As Marcia says, if this summer is as hot and as dry as it's predicted to be, we may do move into a rationing stage, but the way, but at the, at the risk of being more redundant than I normally am, that we're not rationing water now. This is the conservation program that has been adopted by the Water Trust, and it's going to go forward this way, probably forever. I mean, I can't imagine the water supply increasing to the point where we could go back to a situation where you could just use water freely. So I just want to take an opportunity to emphasize that, because each of you can help the public understand that when you have that, when you have the opportunity at neighborhood meetings to talk about it.
I'm not going to go into the details of the different divisions in the department in the interest of time. Water quality are the people who pump water, run Lake Etoka pump water into Lake Draper, run the local water supply lakes and the water treatment processes and pump stations. Wastewater quality operates our wastewater lift stations, but also manages the fifteen point five million dollar a year contract for wastewater treatment plant contract operations with Veolia. Solid Waste, as you know, provides staff services but manages the waste management contract, which, which again, is about a fifteen million dollar a year overall program for collection of solid waste from a hundred thousand of our customer accounts. Line maintenance are people who repair the pipes, water and sewer. Engineering are the people who get the construction projects out the door and done. Customer services are the people who answer the phones, read the meters, send the bills, resolve disputes in the field, and are about a fourth of the overall utility department. Administration handles a lot of, gets to pay for a lot of contracts, for example, to pilot fees and payment and leave taxes and other fees that come, paybacks to the city's general fund for their services, all come out of the administration division budget. Couple of slides to talk about sources and uses of funds. We're just about using and having a total of two hundred and ninety-one million dollars for Aqua and OC this year. On the left side of the screen, you see the big orange thing is service charges, two hundred fifty-nine point six million dollars. That's the total income for water, sewer and trash, straight from collecting service charges. We're also, we also use a debt fund called Commercial Paper, that it will account for twenty-one point three million dollars of income, and de minimis charges, a group of other de minimis things total up about ten million. Waters, a hundred and twenty-four point eight million dollars of income this year. Wastewater, eighty-nine point two, and solid waste, forty-five point six million. Aqua and OC together again, we're going to use that money, about a third of the money will go to utility capital improvements, about a third of the money will go to operations. Forty-one point eight million dollars goes to service contracts. That's the wastewater treatment plant operations, the solid waste collection, fleet maintenance, it's solid waste, street sweeping, notably bill print mail is another important contract. And debt service for the water utility is about forty-one point three million dollars this year. Aqua itself, well, again, spending about forty-one point three million in debt, about a third of the income goes for capital improvements, another third goes for operations, and fifteen point five million for the wastewater treatment annual contract for operations. OC total uses of funds will be forty-eight million dollars, twenty-six point three million dollars that OC has privatized to contractors again. It's the collection of about a hundred thousand customer accounts every week, bulky waste for those same accounts, curb side recycling services, fleet maintenance, and landfill costs. Very enviable. Cash funded CIP is four point seven million dollars, and I'll move on to that in just a second. So operating budget is in a unique position of a decrease of three tenths of one percent, but there's a reason, and it involves the pumping that Jim has already described. When we rehabilitated, essentially rebuilt, the pipeline pump stations coming from Etoka. We had to shut down the pump stations for a fair amount of time, almost a year with that process. We lost water in Lake Draper. Lake Draper did its job and provided water for us while the pipeline was down. And so three years ago, we added a million and a half dollars to the budget to help we spend money for power to pump more water into Lake Draper. We've reached the point, as Jim mentioned, that the lake is full, and we are, so we're dropping back on that total operating budget. We are, however, increasing our chemical budget, consistent with what's going on in the industry related to chemical costs, about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's about eight percent. We're adding a program that we tested this last year for contracted TV sewer inspection. That helps us find and identify problems in neighborhoods as a whole, so that we can then rehabilitate them with our capital program. We're adding ten positions, five of which have been working temporarily in the utility. Couple, a couple to mention specifically. Under in administration, we're adding a conservation specialist and an environmental supervisor. Those are the folks who run the conservation program, do a lot of our external outreach along with OSU OKC and Debbie Reagan. And then the environmental supervisor is the person who'll be in the field managing the folks who are writing the tickets and leaving warnings and talking to folks to encourage behavior changes in conservation on a one-on-one basis throughout the city. For growth purposes, we're adding a couple, we're adding two water service representatives, the people who go out and solve problems, identify the source of problems for us in the water utility, in wastewater utility. We're adding a meter reader, again, it's a growth response. Adding an engineering assistant, electronic technician, and other divisions to help with growth in programs related specifically to electronics and maintenance of engineering So moving on to the capital improvements program, we'll talk about water, wastewater and solid waste. Again, eighty-two point nine million dollars this year, about a third of our income. This map just shows you all the places we're working this year and next year. I'm not going to dwell, we'll get to a little more specific later. We'll continue to build, we are continuing to build pipelines west, and this year, we'll be backing them up with pump stations. These are pictures of a forty-eight inch pipeline in construction. We built five and a half miles of a forty-eight inch pipeline this year, and another large pipeline waiting construction. We'll be doing the normal kinds of renewal or replacement, replacing about seventeen to twenty miles of water and sewer pipe in neighborhoods, buying rolling stock as it wears out. This map shows in light blue, water projects that are in construction this fiscal year, and in dark blue, projects that are coming next fiscal year. I draw your attention to the light blue projects going west. We've been coming from the Draper Water Treatment Plant, which is in the southeast part of the city, where that dot is, all the way west to where we reached Cemetery Road this year. And this year, we also begin to build refurbished pump stations that help deliver that water we're now transporting. The slide also shows the, a line in the far southeast part of the city, leaving the city. That's, that's the beginning of engineering on the second Etoka pipeline, cursed this year. We've completed some interesting projects this year and have more to go. All the water treatment plants will have, will be touched with some level of improvement. Again, the design of the second Etoka pipeline begins. We have booster station upgrades coming forward. Those are the, again, those little dots on the map, for each, that will be an improvement that will produce more water for customers in the high-growth area to the west and south part of the city. The picture on your right is of the brand-new clarifier in operation at the Hefner Water Treatment Plant. We've also completed a major booster station this year at the corner of Southwest 104th and Portland. This booster station will pump forty million gallons of water a day out to the southwest part of the city. Forty million gallons is about forty percent of an average day in Oklahoma City, but it's about twenty percent of a peak day in Oklahoma City. So this is a great thing. It's already been helping us deliver more water and a consistency of pressure in the southwest part of the city. We completed an expansion of the Lake Hefner Water Treatment Plant this year, bringing its capacity from a hun, from seventy-five million gallons a day to a hundred million gallons a day. Moving on to the wastewater system. The, this is not showing up well on, I apologize, it's not showing up well on the screen. So there are two colors of blotches. There's a red blotch and a brown blotch. I hope it's showing up better on your screens than it's on here. The brown blotches are last year. The red blotches are this coming year. Where you see, what can best be described as blobs, are, those are areas where we're studying the sewer system to identify problems, again, going back to our TV inspection program, and perhaps not, certainly not replacing every sewer or even ten percent of the sewers in that area, but figuring out in large mass where the problems are so that they can be corrected. It's a part of our ongoing effort to reduce the total peak demand that's seen in really wet weather, and out of that, then reduce flow to the water, to the wastewater treatment plants and the potential for backups and, or manholes overflowing because the sewer line is overloaded with rainwater. The lines that you see are new sewer interceptors going in, either to relieve an existing, to add more capacity in an area or to bring new capacity to an area. We will be making improvements again at each of the wastewater treatment plants. About two million dollars will be invested in odor control facilities in the system. About seven million dollars in sewer rain replacements, and about eight million dollars in new interceptors, to give you an idea. These are, these are not exactly sizzle pictures, but they're very important to us. We rehabilitated a lift station in southeastern Oklahoma City called Lift Station Forty-One. Very important, now reliable, that we're able to change the service area and get more out of that lift station. There are about seventy-five lift stations in the system. This is a significant one for us. And finally, the Witcher Lift Station, which is our largest wastewater transport pumping station, about ninety million gallons a day maximum capacity, got a backup generator. We're pursuing backup generators at the water treatment, at the Draper Water Treatment Plant as well, but that's a project coming in the next couple of years. Solid Waste is a capital budget of four point seven million dollars. Three point two million goes to new vehicles. A million, five, fifty thousand is dedicated to big blue carts. And finally, we're making some improvements to the fleet maintenance shop, again, to make them, to tool them for CNG vehicle repair and operation. Happy to answer questions, counsel. Thank you very much.
I have one question, one comment. On the safety goals you've established, the charter ought to be zero. There's no level of injury that's acceptable, accidents are acceptable. Now, realistically, I know that may not be achievable, but I think that ought to be our goal, to have zero accidents in all our departments. We have an obligation to try to send our workers home in the same condition they arrived, and not with broken bones or blades. We ought to send them home, and the only way we can do that is say there's no acceptable level of accident. Now, it may not be achievable, but I think that ought to be our goal. Second question, is on your wastewater sales, have you talked to any oil and gas companies about using that wastewater in their fracking program?
No, sir, but I know that Norman is pursuing an agreement to do that, and we will follow up.
Okay, because I think that's a fertile source for selling some of that wastewater when treated, and if it needs additional treatment, we may have to ask oil and gas companies to put that treatment field in, but they're, they're experienced in, at wiring right away and building pipelines so we could, you know, sell it to them on what we wanted to call it.
Great idea.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Just following up on Pats, what does that, what does it mean to have a nine point three percent injury rate? Is that nine point three percent of workers or?
It means that, yes, it means that it may be, I twisted my hand and want you to know, but it may also be at all levels of serious injuries that result, as the council knows, in payment. in payment for physical harm to the employee, to workers' comp. But, zero is the goal. We're setting a new target of 8% and working on ways to get more progress made. We've been, as a part of Utilities University, training supervisors to help change the culture. But I think, in your experiences, you know that culture changes, takes some time. So, new ways to push the program are important, and letting folks know, letting particularly employees know that council considers the goal zero is helpful. Thank you.
So, if someone's injured twice in a year, they would just be counted once?
No, they would be counted twice. If I fell, in our process, we encourage employees to report every injury. We have a large number of significant injuries. My risk management bill is about $3 million a year, and that's significant. So, financial reason as well as the personal reason of being able to send people home and make sure they think it's a safe place to work. So, minor things, again, I cut my finger and I needed a Band-Aid, gets reported. Significant things, we had a guy fall, a guy moved a truck this week, and someone was in the back of the truck and fell backwards. It was a serious near miss. The man who was injured is simply bruised, but we're taking that very seriously because it could have easily killed.
So, where do we sit historically? What would 9%? Would that be high, low, middle?
No, I mean, it's high for our industry.
I mean, for us as a city, regardless?
We're running about 14, 15%. So, we're making progress, but we do need to do better. And so, what we're seeing is we've reached plateaus, and right now, we're at a plateau. So, we're implementing new initiatives to draw attention to safety. Tim, please.
Thank you. I think one of the things we need to recognize is that this upcoming fiscal year is going to be a very, very active one, potentially, for the Water Department and Utilities Department. I'm very optimistic that we'll resolve the water lawsuit during the next fiscal year, and with that resolution, it's going to bring some additional requirements on the city, and some of them will cost money. And so, we're going to have to be figuring out how we're going to do that. I think the idea that the conservation plan is just in its infancy as we move forward, I think you're going to see some changes there, perhaps. And I think what Marcia alluded to earlier, and the manager alluded to, concerning the cost of water, we're going to do some intensive looks at how we charge for water, and I suspect that's going to be something that we're all going to have to deal with. In addition, I think it's time that we revisit the charge, the hookup charge with regard to water and sewer across the city, and we've got to find a better way to fund the system, and it can't all be on the people that are already paying for it. Some of it's got to be put on the new development that goes on. And I think that all those things are going to come to a head in the next 14 months, or a lot of them will at least. It's going to be a very active time for us to think about those kind of things.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Marcia, next.
Okay. Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present the FY 2015 proposed budget for the Public Transportation and Parking Department. I'd like to take a minute to recognize a few of our staff members that we have with us this morning. We have Michael Scroggins up here at the computer. He's the manager of our Public Information Office, as well as our Information Technology and Customer Service Divisions. We also have Melissa Rousey, our Finance Manager, with us, Debbie Holt's Claw, who manages all of our parking services, as well as Larry Hopper, our Principal Planner. And so, I appreciate all the help they've provided in preparing this budget this year. With that, I'd like to kind of start by talking about, you know, public transportation and parking services, we feel play a vital role in the economic well-being of our local community. And I think whether it's getting people to work on buses, or providing ample parking spaces so that people can access businesses, we believe that where transportation goes, community grows. And we also feel like, you know, this same sentiment is reflected in the city council priority to develop a public transportation system that works for all citizens, and is also echoed in some of the feedback we've received from our citizen surveys. In fact, our next slide here actually looks at some data from one of our recent citizen surveys, and you can see that public transportation continues to rank as one of the top areas of service that citizens say need the most emphasis in the coming years, falling only behind the condition of city streets and ease of travel, as well as police presence. And I think although the survey shows that citizens are indicating additional emphasis is needed, I think it's also important to kind of back up and think about, over the last few years, the fact that we have done some things, and we have provided some additional funding to be able to improve the public transportation system. And I think probably the best example I could share with you of recent enhancements to public transportation is our recent implementation of the transit system analysis. It was actually requested by council back in the fiscal year, 13-year, concluded in FY 14, and then, I'm pleased to report, recently implemented the week of April 28th through May 2nd. And so, I wanted to talk, if I could, just a little bit about what we're calling our system reboot, and that is the implementation of the transit system analysis. We feel like we were off to a very good start, had a very successful week in implementing our new routes, and I know that most of you are familiar with some of the changes that were made, but nonetheless, I'd like to just talk a little bit about it, because it's a very exciting implementation for us. For one thing, improved frequency is probably the most noticeable difference that you'll see in our system today versus what it was even a month ago. All but just a handful of our routes are now operating on 30-minute frequencies. If you look at our route map, you'll notice we have a lot more direct routes. We're also operating on clock-faced headways, which means that buses are arriving at the transit center either on the hour, 15 minutes after the hour, 30 minutes after the hour, or 45 minutes after the hour. So, what this does is, for one, it creates less time waiting for transfers at the transit center, but also, it makes our bus system a lot easier to understand if you know that my bus is either going to be by every 30 minutes or every 60 minutes. So, again, we're very excited about the changes. I want to thank staff. We ended up scheduling some additional staff down at the transit center during that kickoff week to answer some questions and be more accessible to some of the riders that had questions about schedule changes. We also recruited some administrative staff to ride the buses and serve as transit ambassadors. And so, again, just wanted to provide kind of some highlights of that week. We do think it was a very successful launch. Also, looking at our next slide here, this also comes from our citizen survey, and I wanted to include this because this is actually a new question this year on the citizen survey. When citizens were asked about characteristics that they consider when determining whether or not to use public transportation, you can see that frequency and trip time were the most important characteristics to our citizens. And I wanted to include this slide because it's consistent with the recommendations of the study and the recent changes we made, where we really tried to improve the frequency and reduce the time it takes for folks to get around town. With that background information covered, I'd like to begin our discussion of the budget by mentioning that our strategic business plan is really the basis for our budget development. We believe that our plan, along with our budget for the FY 15 fiscal year, will support our core responsibilities. It will allow us to continue to maintain the enhancements that we've just talked about, as well as support council's priority to develop a transportation system that works for all citizens. You can find our org chart, along with our mission statement, our expenditure summaries, and some performance data, beginning on page 347 of your budget book. Like to spend, if I could, the next few minutes just talking about some of our department issues. And one thing I might remind council is, when we talk about issues, you might think of those as really the biggest challenges that we see our department facing in the coming years. And so, we like to identify what those issues or challenges are, obviously, as early as possible, so that we can begin taking a proactive approach to manage those challenges as they come our way. The state of good repair, the first issue we have in our strategic business plan, really speaks to the need to replace buses and upgrade and maintain the condition of our facilities. You can see on the slide here the programs that really support this state of good repair issue, and the two programs that are primarily, I guess, have the most influence on our ability to maintain a state of good repair, is our fleet management program and our facilities management programs. In our fleet management program, we actually maintain maintenance and repairs for over 100 different vehicles in our fleet. On our facilities management program, we are responsible for maintaining four different transit buildings at three different locations. So, those two programs really have the most impact on that state of good repair issue. Bus operations program, though, we rely on our operators to do pre-trip inspections of our equipment, and of course, notify us of any needed equipment repairs. And then, on the parking side of our operations, when we think of state of good repair, our on-street parking meter program, our staff in that program are responsible for repairing and making sure all of the parking meters in the downtown area are operational. And then, in our municipal off-street parking program, that's our parking garages, staff in that program regularly manages capital improvement projects, and also manages a contract with Republic Parking Services to, just for the day-to-day upkeep and maintenance of the parking garages. So, in terms of specific strategies that we have for trying to address this issue, one is we want to continue to seek funding alternatives for replacement of buses, and I have a slide where we'll look at that in a little bit more detail here in a minute. The other thing we want to do is continue to expand the skill set of our operators and our supervisors, so that we are leveraging our AVL technology and making sure our AVL technology is operating like it should, so that we can use that as a tool to provide as high a level of service as we possibly can. And then, on the parking side, one of our strategies is to continue to replace the outdated parking meters, and we would expect additional new multi-space parking meters to be installed as Project 180 begins to wrap up. In terms of strategic results, those are some of the, what we would consider to be kind of the performance measures at the highest level that help us kind of gauge our effectiveness in being able to address this issue. One thing we look at is the on-time performance of our bus system. You'll notice in your budget book that through at least the six months of the year, we're estimated to finish at about a 92% on-time performance rate. That's consistent with our target, and I think it's basically the same performance that we had last year. Now, I will say that in the coming years, we would expect those numbers to probably change, because we're going to be relying more on our AVL technology to let us know how we're doing in terms of on-time performance. A lot of what we're doing now is just kind of some random sampling and some time checks. And so, we think the AVL is really going to give us a much more accurate representation moving forward. And then, you'll notice the reliability of the parking meters in terms of the multi-space parking meters, downtime has been virtually nothing. So, we've had really good success with the multi-space meters. I want to talk a little bit, in the interest of state of good repair, just talk a little bit about our aging fleet. And I know this is a topic that's been brought up before, but I think it's important to continue the discussion. In this next fiscal year, FY 15, we will be looking at about 16 of our fixed route, the large buses you see out on the street, 16 of those buses reaching the end of their useful life. 16 buses is roughly about 28% of our fleet. So, with that, we've developed a strategy to where we think we're going to be able to replace about six of those buses over the next two years. We believe we have the grant funding for four replacements in FY 15. If funding levels continue as they have, we could probably replace another two in FY 16. And so, really, where that gets us is looking out ahead and trying to, again, be proactive with that state of good repair issue. In FY 17, we're going to have 10 buses, roughly 18% of our fleet, that are going to be entering their third year, what we would consider to be past their useful life. Now, that's not to say we can't still continue to use those vehicles, but obviously, the maintenance and upkeep is going to be more expensive and require more time. On the parking side of our operations, when we look at state of good repair, we have several projects that are currently underway in regards to parking garages. Obviously, the Arts District Garage is being built across from the street from City Hall, continues to be under construction. I believe they're very close to topping out on the top floor there, so we should expect construction to continue and hopefully be wrapped up by the end of the summer. On the Century Center Garage, I have a picture of that here on the slide. If you've been by the Century Center Garage lately, you'll realize it's closed for business. All the panels are removed, and there's some serious construction activity going on. We are actually managing a project to make structural repairs to the minus two and minus one floors, the two underground floors, and we would expect that project to probably be wrapped up, our portion of it, sometime around December. Looking at the Santa Fe Parking Garage, if you've been by the Santa Fe Garage recently, you'll notice that it's receiving a little bit of a facelift. We're adding new lighting, we're adding some decorative panels, metal siding, new glass and sidewalks for the retail area. This project, we expect to have wrapped up, hopefully, within about the next 60 days. And then, once that's wrapped up, we'll begin a new project at the Santa Fe Garage, replacing all of the elevators. Looking at the Sheridan Walker Garage, if you've been in the Sheridan Walker lately, we don't have any construction underway currently, but that's going to change probably within the next 30 to 60 days. We're looking at awarding a contract to begin working on some repairs to areas of the concrete that are spalling. We're going to be doing some rehab to the staircases, as well as doing some waterproofing. So, as you can see, we have a lot of projects and activities going on in order to try to maintain and address that state of good repair issue. Our next issue really has to do with workforce development, and this issue speaks to the challenge of recruiting, developing, and retaining that well-qualified workforce. And if we look at our programs in our operations that can influence this issue the most, it's really our Safety and Risk Management Program, along with our Executive Leadership Program. Some of the strategies that we've employed recently to try to maintain this workforce, one is we continue our quarterly training meetings, all of our maintenance staff and operators attend quarterly training sessions. The operators, in particular, receive both training on the safety side and also on the customer service side. We also do some targeted safety campaigns. One of the recent campaigns that you may have noticed is, if you follow behind any of our fixed route buses, you'll notice an extra set of strobe lights on the back of the buses, and we've been installing those lights as kind of, you know, an additional warning to drivers behind us that we're going to be coming to a stop. So, that's just an example of one of our targeted safety campaigns. And then, we're going to continue some of our retention team meetings. This is something we started a few months ago, where when we hire bus operators, we generally hire them as a class. We might have three, or four, or six come in at one time. And what we decided to do as a management team was begin meeting at 45, 65, and 85-day intervals of the new class, their employment time, and we evaluate the new hires, and we look at their driving record, we look at customer service issues, just attendance, those kinds of things, and try to really work with those employees during that probationary period and help them along, so that we can, again, address retention. In terms of strategic results or performance measures, a couple of things we look at in determining whether we are developing our workforce. You know, if you'll notice in our mission statement, one of the things we say is, we want to provide safe service. And so, we think at the highest level, one of the ways we can know if we have a well-trained and developed workforce is if we're providing that safe service, particularly on the bus operations. And so, when we look at our accidents for FY 14, we are on track to achieve about 2.07 accidents per 100,000 miles. That compares to our target of... That compares to our target, I believe of about 2.89. So, we're doing a little bit better than target. And then, for our next fiscal year, we've actually adjusted that target downwards to two, so that it's, again, a little bit more of a, a stretch goal for us. In terms of turnover, this is a new measure that we just started looking at this year, and we're at about a 13% turnover for FY14. We've adjusted our target for FY15, and we've set our goal to be at 11%. Our next issue looks at sustainable growth and service development. And this issue really is about that increased demand that we're seeing for, one, multimodal services, multimodal transportation services in Oklahoma City, but also that increasing gap between the services that we're able to provide, as well as those demanded. If you look at the programs that can probably most influence our ability to sustain growth, I have them on the slide here, our bus operations program probably is the one that can influence this issue the most, because we provide over 2.8 million passenger trips per year using our regular fixed route bus service. So, we feel like any type of service enhancements or changes to the fixed route system to get more people on the bus really is probably the, the best way to try to keep up with growth for transportation needs. I do want to talk quickly about a couple of other programs, though. One is the Metro Lift ADA Transportation Program. This is the program that provides the paratransit service to individuals that are unable to drive and cannot use our fixed route service. And what we've been experiencing with our paratransit service, looking at just the first nine months of this year, is about a 6.5% increase in passenger trips that we, we've provided. So, we're certainly seeing an increase in demand on the paratransit side of our operations. And I have a chart we'll look at that'll get into a little bit more detail here in a minute. Our social services transportation programs, this is a collection of transportation services that we provide to a niche group of clients. It's particularly elderly individuals that, that use these services. We provide trips to shopping sites, we provide trips to meal programs. And one of the areas where we're seeing, again, probably the most increase in demand is the trips that we provide to medical appointments. There are folks that perhaps can't drive, they don't qualify for paratransit, but they still need to, you know, make their regular doctor's appointments, and that is where we serve those individuals through this program here. On the next slide here, we'll look at some of the strategies that we've identified for trying to address this issue of, of sustainable growth. One is, you know, I talked about our bus operations program, the idea of getting more people onto the bus. And so, one of our strategies is to maximize ridership, but it's maximize ridership through additional system enhancements. And additional system enhancements can be leveraging AVL technology to provide real-time bus information. System enhancements could be the trip planner that we have coming on our website, could be improved bus stops and bus shelters. So, there's a lot of different system enhancements that we have the opportunity to look at to try to maximize that ridership. And then, I've already kind of talked a little bit about seeking funding opportunities for the replacement of buses. Some of the strategic results that we look at when evaluating our ability to address our sustainable growth issue, one is ridership. And if you look at the, the next slide here, this is a graph of our riders per service hour going back to the 2010 fiscal year. You can see that for the current fiscal year, we're looking to finish at about 18 passengers per service hour. That's consistent with where we were a year ago, down a little bit from where we were in 2012, if you look at riders per hour. I would point out that in 2013, council provided some funding to allow some additional frequency on bus routes. In fact, I believe we added about 5,100 service hours in that FY13 fiscal year. So, anytime you add those hours, generally, you're going to see a little bit of a dip in the ridership per hour. Looking at total ridership in terms of number of trips provided, though, we've actually seen some pretty good growth over that time period. In FY14, this current fiscal year, we're estimating to finish at about 2.82 million passenger trips. That's about 10,000 more passenger trips than what we provided the previous year. And then, if you go back to FY10, we had reported upwards of 2.7. So, pretty decent growth in terms of total ridership over that same time period. I mentioned our ADA passenger trips and, and indicated that through the first nine months of this year, we've seen about a 6.5% increase. I have this chart here, because this actually looks at month to month over that same nine or 10-month period. And you can look at each of, you can basically look at how the, the trips have changed for each month over the last three years, and you can see that all but just a handful, or I think it's actually all but just two months, we've seen year-over-year increases, month by month, in our paratransit operation. And then, parking services, one of the ways we evaluate our ability to maintain sustainable growth is through the occupancy rate of our parking garages. You can see that for FY14, we're at about 120% occupancy, significantly higher than where we were back in 2009, where occupancy was a little bit more manageable at 88%. But, I think, you know, when we look at this trend line, it's just kind of telling of all of the activity, economic development, new businesses that are locating downtown, and of course, the, the pressure that creates on the parking system to, to find people places to park. With the opening of the new parking garage, we do expect this number to come down, but realistically, kind of some of our, you know, our early projections are, we're probably going to be in the high 90s, maybe even close to 100% on occupancy, even with the new garage opened.
Does Sheridan Walker provide you any opportunity for additional spaces, or?
Yeah, there, there is some additional parking in Sheridan Walker. We kind of anticipate probably having to shuffle, shuffle some folks around when the new garage opens, so I'd imagine some of that, what capacity is available in Sheridan Walker, may be filled up. Also, I think we're still trying to determine how many of those Sheridan Walker spaces we're going to need potentially for the elementary school. So, if any of our garages have capacity, it's the Sheridan Walker, but unfortunately, most people prefer to park in, you know, Santa Fe, Cox, and difficult to get them over to this end of town.
Thank you.
Our last issue that I'd like to, like to share with you is our issue related to community relations. And this issue is directly associated with really understanding our community's expectations for service and overall experience. For the transportation side of our operations, both riders and non-riders alike, you know, they have issues about frequency, extended service hours, Sunday service, senior mobility. There's a lot of, I don't know if concern is the right word, but a lot of expectations that are out there on the community. Parking, it's a little bit simpler. Our customers on the parking side of our operations just want more places to park. So, you can see there on the slide, the, the four operational programs that really have, you know, the most influence on our ability to be able to address this community relations issue. But, really, I believe it's the public information and customer relations program that has the most impact. So, you know, whether they're talking directly with customers and giving them advice on how to use the bus route, or they're out in the field conducting how-to-ride classes, or maybe it's preparing press releases, announcing new service, it really is that, the folks in that program that, that provide the most support on addressing this community relations issue. Some of the strategies that we've identified for maintaining community, community relations is, one, we want to improve customer satisfaction through enhanced amenities. And so, again, this kind of goes back to the strategy we talked about earlier, where we want to continue to make sure the community is aware of and using some of our new technology. We also feel like anybody that uses our bus service or any of our facilities, you know, we, we would expect them to be able to have a, a clean and well-maintained bus or facility, and so, that's one of our strategies, is to emphasize the upkeep of our assets. We also want to continue to partner with community organizations and develop business. And some of the examples that I can share with you about recent partnerships, one is the Oklahoma, the partnership with Oklahoma City Public Schools. We continue to offer the Rhodes Scholars Program, and we're looking at some options to expand that Rhodes Scholars Program, so that we can provide free public transportation to students that want to perhaps, you know, go to a field trip. The other program that we're working on is what we call the Hall Pass Program, and that's a pilot program that we're working with Emerson High School in the Oklahoma City Public School System to provide public transportation to those high school students. We've also had some discussions with OCCC in developing a student pass for their students and installing some signage that will provide real-time bus information for that campus. And then, lastly, one of the things we've been working on in the areas of partnering with community organizations and businesses is we've had some preliminary discussions with 7-Eleven in hopes of being able to sell our bus passes in the, in the 7-Eleven stores, which would open up roughly 150 locations across the metro area where we could, where we could sell bus passes. So, we're, we're excited about those opportunities. In terms of the resources needed to address these issues, implement the strategies, and provide core services, we are looking at a FY2015 proposed budget of roughly $35.7 million. You can see that our bus transit operations make up the majority of that budget at about $27.2 million. Our river operation is just under $1 million, and then, our parking operation is $7.5 million in operating budget. And I think it's important to, to mention, too, as you're, as you're aware, our parking operation is actually, you know, self-sufficient. The revenues that we derive from our parking operations support all of the, all of the Looking at funding sources for our transit operations, you can see that the city portion makes up over half of the funding for our bus service. So, of the $27.2 million, the city is contributing about $15.4 million of that. The federal share is $7.4 million, or about 27%. And then, our fare revenue makes up about 11, it supports about 11% of our budget, or provides about $3 million worth of revenue. Then, you can see the state and some of the other funding sources make out, make out the rest of the, of the pie chart there. You know, when you look at the, the city contribution there, at over half of the, of the funding for the bus operation, wanted to include a slide here, just to kind of give you an idea of the, the dynamic between the city's portion and the federal portion, and what kind of changes we've seen over the last few years in funding levels. Basically, if you look at this chart here, you can see the, the bright gold color is the city's contribution to bus operations and how it's changed over the last six years compared to the dark blue, which is the federal funding level. And so, it's pretty obvious to see that the federal funding, except for FY11, when we had some, some ARRA funds, has remained relatively stable. It hasn't, hasn't changed much at all. The city funding, on the other hand, we've seen has grown steadily. And I think what that means is that, basically, the inflationary pressures to maintain the same service level budget, in addition to any enhancements that we've made to the bus system over the last few years, have really been, been provided by contributions from the city. And so, we're certainly grateful for that.
Can I ask you a question? Can you go back to, no, with the, had the breakdown of how much it was, city, federal, state? The next one maybe?
Oh, this one right here?
Where do you think that compares to other states? We, we are the capital city, the largest city in Oklahoma, and we, we receive $1 million from the state. How do you think that compares to the other 49 states in America?
You know, I would, I, I think it would vary probably widely from state to state in how much emphasis they put on public transportation in that individual state. I really would think it would probably be on the low end, you know? Be glad to, be glad to look at that, but...
I'm confident it's on the low end. I'm wondering if it's the lowest.
Yeah, it could very, you know, I didn't want to say it was the lowest, but it could very well be at probably the lowest.
Could we look at that, as we're putting our state legislative agenda together, can we figure out exactly where we are?
Yes, absolutely.
Counsel, I'm going to borrow one of your terms, I believe we're an outlier.
Yes.
And do we know if this million dollars at least was protected this year? I haven't seen the total budget numbers.
I think it is. Yeah, I actually talked with our Oklahoma Transit Association President yesterday, in fact, and, and we are, will receive this level of funding, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm looking at our parking funding sources. As I mentioned, our parking operation is self-sufficient. No city payments go into that operation. The funding sources are, in total, are about $7.5 million. You can see that our monthly parkers really make up the majority of our revenue for our parking operations at 66%. And then, our event revenue, at about $1.7 million, makes up 22% of our revenue. Daily parkers, 11%. And then, you can see we have some other revenue, which is primarily some lease revenue for some of the retail space, makes up 1% or less of our...
What is the monthly charge, and is it the same for every garage?
Yeah, I believe the monthly charge is $110 a month is our base rate, and it is now the, I believe it's now the same with all garages. Sheridan Walker may be different. Yeah, Sher, what is the amount for Sheridan Walker? 90. Sheridan Walker's 90.
I think that's a daily parking rate in New York City, by the way.
Yeah, I think so, too.
So, that's per space, per month?
Yes.
Hundred and ten.
Okay. Looking at some of our highlighted budget changes, the first change we made to our budget was to make improvements to our paratransit service. We talked about the increase in demand that we've seen with paratransit service. So, one of the things we're doing is adding an additional bus operator to essentially put one more paratransit bus out on the street to provide service. We've been managing this situation in the past by using regular fixed route operators to try to fill in some of our gaps. However, now with our new system alignment, we actually have more buses on the street at one time than we used to. So, we kind of feel like that's probably just not a sustainable way to approach taking care of paratransit trips, particularly in light of our increase in demand. The other thing we, we noticed is during our most recent review by the FTA, our triennial review in November, one of the comments from the reviewer was a little bit of concern about the amount of dropped calls that we were experiencing on our, in our ADA operation. And now, we looked at that, and of course, you know, generally, most of those dropped calls are going to come at the busiest times of the day, and we're confident that a lot of those folks do call back and eventually get through and are able to schedule a trip. But, that was a recommendation that the FTA made to us, was to address that dropped call volume, so we're also adding a call taker in our paratransit operations. The next item we have is increased transit center cleaning and maintenance. If you'll remember, when I was talking about strategies for community relations, one of the things we want to do is, is maintain facilities in a, in a presentable manner. The transit center is now about 10 years old, and with roughly 9,000 to 10,000 passenger trips per day, you can imagine there's a significant amount of traffic that goes through that building. So, we'd like to add an additional person to help us maintain and clean that facility for the evening shift. We'll have two people to maintain all the exterior and interior of the building to get it ready for the next day. And then, we're also looking at adding some funding for some additional bus repair and maintenance. This will allow us to be able to fill a mechanic position. Again, when you think about the aging of our fleet, the fact that we now have to have three more buses out on the street to provide service, and what we did even just a few months ago, the pressure to keep up with preventative maintenance and make timely repairs is certainly upon us, and we, we feel like these resources will help us, help us keep up with that as well. And then, the last enhancement we've made to our budget is adding funding for a streetcar operations manager. And the reason we looked at that is it's anticipated that COTPA will more than likely run the operation of the streetcar. And so, what we would like to do is be able to put someone on staff as early on as possible, so that as we start getting to the point where we're making decisions about how the streetcar is going to operate, we have somebody with the expertise to give us some guidance in that area. So, it could be, you know, expertise related to the maintenance facility and the best way to lay that out and how to staff it... way to lay that out and how to staff it. It could be expertise related to technology that's required to run the streetcar. And we just like, we would just like to have somebody, you know, giving us some guidance and being in on the front end of those operations before decisions are made further down the That basically concludes the budget presentation of what I was going to present this morning. I do have a few extra slides that I would like to share with you, and I'll also mention that there's an additional handout in your packet that goes into more detail about what I'm going to talk about. But back on April 29th, we were asked by council to take a look at a pilot program for extending the service hours on a couple of bus routes. And so what we did is we've put together some options. One is looking at a pilot program for extending evening service on a couple of routes. We've also put together some other options for you to consider in the event that there's incremental funding available for additional bus service enhancements. So I'd like to go through those options real quick and share with you what we've come up with. So I'll go through each one of these options on the following slides. Option one is essentially a pilot program that would extend the service hours on two of our bus routes until 12:00 a.m. Those two bus routes would be routes 11 and 23. Both of these routes, as you'll notice, are crosstown routes, so users of the system can essentially get, you know, from one side to the city to the other with a crosstown route. Route 11 is our south crosstown route that you can see uses 29th and 15th Street. It currently operates on 60-minute frequencies, and we would recommend if we extended evening service to this route, maintaining that 60-minute frequency. Route 23 is our north crosstown route using 23rd Street, serving Oklahoma City University as well as the Uptown area, on out to the State Capitol. This is our most heavily ridden route. We get the highest passenger counts on Route 23, and currently it operates on a 25-minute frequency. We would recommend for evening service, probably looking at a 50-minute to an hour frequency on it as well. A couple of things to mention when we're considering extending service into the evening hours. We do have, right now, a MetroLink service that we provide. And the MetroLink service is what we consider to be a point-deviated service. It's a very limited service, but it does operate between the hours of roughly 7:30 when the fixed route operation ceases to midnight. There's about eight scheduled stops around town, so again, it's a very, very limited service. But we do feel like if we were to initiate a pilot program like the one you see in front of you, we would probably also take a look at our MetroLink service and see if there wasn't the ability to integrate some of those stops for transfer opportunities along these routes. So that would take a little bit more research. The other thing to consider is anytime we extend service on the fixed route bus system, we also have to provide paratransit service, and so that does add to the cost. But what we would be doing is not only adding service to routes 11 and 23, we would also be providing paratransit service until midnight within 3/4 of a mile of those bus routes. The total estimated cost for this option is $420,000 annually. Option two is also looking at extending hours to midnight for bus routes. This option is actually consistent with the transit system analysis that was put together by Nelson Nygaard. And when we asked them to look at options for evening service, they proposed looking at a minimum of 12 core routes. And these 12 core routes are routes that were selected because they serve retail areas, they serve areas where there were evening activities such as O-triple-C, as well as some low-income areas. Now, obviously, we won't go through all of the routes on the map that you have in front of you, but I did want to share what the system map would look like in the evening if these 12 routes were in service. You can see we provide pretty good coverage for all quadrants of the city, and there's multiple transfer opportunities as well. If we were to extend and go with the 12 route approach, we would also be providing paratransit service until midnight as well. The cost for this option is estimated to be $1.5 million. Option three is simply increasing frequency, or I should say, completing the frequency enhancements on our existing daytime fixed route system. The additional funding that was provided to us in FY 14 for system enhancements helped us increase our frequency dramatically, but there were three routes that had we had additional funding, we would have recommended to also change to 30-minute frequencies. And those routes are 8, 11, and 14. And so this recommendation really is consistent with the transit system analysis, where they indicated increasing frequency should be the number-one priority. And it's also consistent, as we saw with some of the feedback from our citizen survey, where, you know, frequency was one of the main characteristics citizens looked at when they decided whether or not to use public transportation. I'll give, I'll share maps of each one of these routes with you real quickly, but if we were to implement the increased frequency on each of these routes, the total cost would be roughly $1.2 million. Route 8 is the route that uses North Penn up to 63rd and goes out to far northwest Oklahoma City, Lyellwood Lane. This bus, with frequency enhancements, we would make sure was on 30-minute frequency all day. Route 11, we've talked about that already, that's our south crosstown route. Currently, that's on 60-minute frequency. This is one we would recommend changing to a 30-minute frequency. And then option three is Route 14. This serves the southeast corner of Oklahoma City, using Walker South and eventually all the way out to Sunny Lane. This, we would need to add one bus to put this route at 30-minute frequency, and that cost would be roughly $310,000. And then option four really, you know, is just kind of taking the approach of if we wanted to try a pilot program, let's say on just one route, what route would that be? We would probably recommend, or I should say, we would recommend extending service on Route 23. And then other frequency enhancements, depending on funding available, could be made. We could look at still adding some frequency on the daytime routes and then looking at a pilot program on Route 23.
So Jason, again, if I get my math correctly here, 186 to do the one route and 480 to do extended service to midnight on the two crosstown routes.
That's right. 420 for the two crosstown routes.
And if we wanted to enhance the frequency on 11, that's 620. So we're basically looking at a, if you did a Chinese menu and you extended the two routes to 12 hours and you extended the frequency on the south crosstown, my number says $1,001, basically.
That is exactly right, yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we've noticed Route 11 has really been, we've really been pleasantly surprised with the ridership on Route 11, being a brand-new route. It's one that we created as a result of the study to provide a south crosstown. Ridership's been higher than what we expected for a new route, so one of the reasons we're recommending enhanced frequency.
On the enhanced frequency, have you set metrics to know if you want or not? I mean, what increase in frequency would be an indication that we should do this on a permanent basis?
Yeah, well, I think in the long term, it really goes back to our overall ridership and our riders per service hour. I don't have those metrics in front of me, but I do know that when we've looked at it in the past, just with the incremental funding that council has provided, even prior to the transit system analysis, when we added frequency, we saw ridership increase.
And that was natural. We, everybody understood that was going to happen, but it surprised a lot of people was how big that increase was. It was, you know, 40 percent, I don't remember what the number was, but it was a big number. And it was, you know, everybody anticipated ridership going up, but it went up lots more than we thought.
Yes.
Have we developed some metrics here that would give us an indication if we did the right thing? How do we know if we want?
We can develop, as we choose the alternatives, we can develop what those goals should be.
I think we got to know what those goals are before we choose alternatives.
Before we choose, okay.
I mean, I just think we got to get this thing in the right order, and we need to know what, how much are we investing for what kind of return?
Yeah.
Not, if we invest, then we'll tell what kind of return we're going to get. That's not a good way to do it. Second question, how many CNG buses do you have operating?
We have two CNG buses.
How does a maintenance operation cost compared to a standard bus?
You know, the ongoing maintenance isn't too different than a standard bus. Now, we do have to have some additional expertise to be able to work on those buses. We have to, one of the things that's very time-consuming, I believe, is we have to adjust the valves more often on the CNG buses. It just takes a little bit more time to do that kind of work. But on the flip side, our cleaner-burning diesel buses also are creating some challenges for us just in the emission controls. So it's kind of a trade-off. Now, on the upfront costs of maintaining CNG buses, there is some substantial upfront costs because the maintenance facility that you work on those buses in has to be equipped with additional protective devices to be able to work on CNG. But that capital cost, we have already, we've already made that investment.
You know, we talked a little bit about this before, but I think you ought to explore some public-private partnerships, because I think some of the oil and gas companies are, they're interested in promoting CNG vehicles, and they might be willing to help us acquire more CNG buses.
Right, okay. Councilman, I would like to, if I could, the question you had about metrics, I think that is an important question, because if we look just at ridership per hour, that's kind of a basis, a basic metric. You know, we would hope eventually with some additional frequency that we would be able to at least maintain that ridership per hour, even though we're adding a lot more hours to the system. But I think another way to look at that is really just to look at overall ridership. And we can see, I think in that chart we were looking at earlier, we could see where overall ridership had increased, and yet our riders per hour had kind of maintained relatively flat performance because there were additional hours in the system. But we have set a goal of, with these new system enhancements, of trying to achieve 19.5 passengers per service hour in the next fiscal year. Now, that might be a little bit optimistic, but we're also confident that we made good changes to our system. And so we'll be anxious as well to evaluate and determine, you know, what effect did these changes have on our ridership. Now, I will say, if we look at implementing any type of evening service, then I think the metrics change, I mean, they're different. Because no matter how successful our evening service is, we're not going to get the ridership that we get during the day. So we can't really use that as our baseline. So I would just caution that as we're looking and setting goals to determine the success.
Doesn't mean it's not good or desirable, it's just that you should have different expectations.
Exactly.
That's fine. Whatever the metrics happen to be is good, as long as we have some idea of a standard that would indicate whether this was a successful program or not.
Okay.
And then one other question, this is a follow-up on something I've asked years ago, two questions, I guess. One is how much, what is the percentage of the fare box in terms of overall operating expenses?
11 percent?
11 percent, it's even less than I thought. So second question is, as you plan bus routes, you coordinate with the planning department?
We've been doing more of that. Not every change we make, we run by the planning department, but we are making a conscious effort now to look at development and how we can combine transit with that.
We have some neighborhoods that the planning departments have identified as--
The transit-oriented development?
They're developments that we're trying to bring back. Improving transit to those areas might be a factor that we look at.
That's right.
Thank you.
I guess if I could, one of the things I would add is that we start looking at night service as an example. You know, we hope we move to the opportunity to attract some more choice riders into the mix. And so frequency and longer hours do make that a more viable option for folks.
Right. And you know, and I think, too, one of the things, if we're talking about extending service, and especially for choice riders, when you look at extending the bus routes and let's say taking it out to 10:30 or midnight, what you may see, you may not necessarily see increased ridership in those hours you added, but now that last lineup or the second-to-last lineup on the daytime service, now you see increased ridership because people now know, oh, I have more flexibility, I don't have to make sure I catch this bus right at 5:00, I also have a 7:00 and a 9:00 option, so.
On the 11 percent fare value, last year it was 12 percent. Is there any plans of trying to make that go in the other direction rather than the down?
We just raised them.
Yeah, we just raised, we just raised the fare. So unless we look at ways to reduce expenditures, which, you know, we do that regularly every year, I don't see that ratio changing a whole lot in the near future.
Well, I guess the reason I ask that is because the other graph with the yellow, the bar graph with the yellow lines, the city continues to increase and the, so I, you know, I feel like they should both be increasing if we're going to be doing this fiscally responsibly. So that's just a comment.
Claire?
Well, I'm going to, I was going to bring up the same point. In the whole discussion, we've talked about going to Uncle Sam and wanting him to kick in more. We've talked about going to the state and asking them to kick in more. And yet, from what I just heard, what the fare cost, what the fare return has been has gone from 12 percent to 11 percent in the last two years.
I don't have, if I'm missing it, I don't have last year's number in front of me, but I do know we're estimated at 11 percent for the coming year.
And estimating at 11 percent, that probably is one of the lower returns of fare contributing to expenses of any public transit system around. Would that be a fair assumption?
I think it would be fair in that I've seen ranges of anywhere from 18 percent up to sometimes 35 percent. Now, I don't know all the dynamics of those systems, that's just looking at raw data, how they're calculating it, you know, can always, you know, change what that percentage is, too, but it is probably on the lower end.
But as we go forward with expanding a mass transit or public transit, whatever you want to call it, and if you talk about wanting a regional approach to it down in the future, it's going to take a lot of money to do that. And is it safe to say today that very few, if any, public transit systems in the United States are actually recouping all of their expenses through revenue, through fares?
None, none.
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
One thing I do want to point out is although the percentage went from 10 to 11, that may not be that the fares went down. The pie got bigger, so if it was the same amount, it may just be, so that's a settled issue.
And I threw out that 12 percent just out of my memory.
Oh, okay.
It did, it did have quite an impact on me when I saw it, though. I'm pretty confident that that's the correct number.
Okay, no, no doubt. I was looking for it in front of me, thinking, where's he, where's he getting that? Okay.
Any other questions for Jason? Now, Deb?
I've got one. Jason, you know, the budget that we get to look at here shows some pretty large numbers, and in governmental accounting, included in the expenditure side, sometimes our transfers and debt service. If we look at parking, and I want to emphasize that we're currently at 120 percent occupancy, which means, well, everybody knows what that means. So there's a large demand for downtown parking. If, and you may not have this number now, but if you could get back with us, if we were to look at the operations of the parking from more of a business sense, looking at total revenue, less operating expenses, what number would that result in? Because currently, in our information, it's a break-even-type budget, but I've got to believe, if we could use these types of terms, we would be generating a profit with respect to parking. And then a related question is, with the large demand for parking in the downtown area, do we have the ability through bond coverage to construct another parking garage?
You know, I know that that's something that's been discussed. I would probably prefer to get with the finance folks that help us look at that before I answer that question. I mean, I'm--
I can, I mean, there's positive cash flow that comes off the parking system, there's no doubt about that. The parking garage was debt-free, parking system was debt-free until we issued the bonds for the parking garage. bonds for the parking garage south of City Hall. We anticipate that that'll be a fairly quick recovery to bring that up, so that's paying for itself. So there is, or we believe there will be, additional bonding capacity within the COPTA system. We are presently doing a parking study right now to evaluate COPTAs as to what their future needs are going to be. And whether that's for a convention center or wherever else, whether it's on the east side of downtown, there are pressures on the parking system right now, they're really great. We get letters, I won't say daily, but weekly, of people that want more parking. I know council got one just last week from one that we responded to. And so there are pressures out there, we're evaluating that, but we really need to do the parking study and try to identify, again, because it's a shifting, you know, as growth occurs, and it's going to shift a lot more when the, you know, the new structure goes in and the old Sage Center side, as some of the other development occurs, as some development occurs down by the Chukor Shore area, it's going to be a changing dynamics in downtown and we need to be responsive to that, try to anticipate where that needs are going to be and try to respond to it the best we can.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, we're done with our presentation today. If I can put a little bit of a context to where we're at, we presented to you a few weeks ago, a balanced budget. Subsequent to that, we did receive our May sales tax check, which was greater than we'd anticipated. With that, budget believes that we can increase our revenue projections in the next year's budget by roughly $900,000. And so what I'm planning on doing with that is what I've heard council say, and if there's something different than, you know, I'd like you to tell me that. But what I've been hearing is that there is some that desire us to put in additional police officers of some sort, and I've heard a desire to add additional enhancements to the transit system. So what I would like to do is bring back to you some options with some combinations thereof of those two specific things. If that's not acceptable, if you want me to do something else, you don't have to let me know right now.
Now would be the time.
Well, now would be a good time. So that's what I'm preparing to do, is to bring you back some options with combinations of those two priorities.
On the enhancements you're going to bring back to us, will we have some idea what the metrics are going to be?
Apparently we will, yes.
Any other comments or questions for the city manager?
Well, we'll get a check about the day we adopt the budget. So we've never ever modified a budget based upon the June check that comes in, so we really... Well, it's always a good thing to do.
All right, let's move on. Adjourn the finance committee meeting, recommit the council meeting, and we have items from council. James, do you have anything for us today? Ed, Larry?
I'd just like to congratulate you, Mayor, on your award last week at the Dean McGee Award with what's going on nationally as far as some of the other cities. It's really a blessing to have a mayor who's recognized for his character and his performance like you were, congratulations.
Thank you. Pete?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just another comment with respect to the one-year anniversary. I understand that the city of Moore is receiving a lot of attention today and rightfully so because of the loss of lives and the damage that that community experienced. But South Oklahoma City, especially Ward Five, experienced a lot of damage on May 20th a year ago. And again, I want to just compliment our first responders, the police, firefighters, IMSA, public service, all aspects of first responders just did a terrific job last year. And over the weekend, I had the pleasure of attending one of the neighborhoods who were, in a sense, celebrating the one-year anniversary, if that's the correct term to use, Westmore Neighborhood. And I want to thank the Thunder organization, they were appropriately represented with their drum line and a group that they call the Storm Chasers. Those are the individuals that come out during breaks and get more audience participation as if we needed that with Thunder basketball games, but they do a terrific job and I want to thank them for coming out, as well as the other neighborhoods throughout South Oklahoma City who have been recovering. And just to pass along one comment, one of the ladies there Saturday evening said, you know, months after the storm, she would continue to get questions as to what her plans were, and eventually people got tired of listening to her. I mean, she had no intentions of relocating or moving anywhere else. She said, you know, this is home and we're not about to leave. So that's encouraging and it's just an indication of the strong will that we have throughout Oklahoma City, people willing to, you know, face adversity and address it correctly, as well as all the help and support that we got, not just citywide, but statewide and throughout the country. So again, thank you.
Meg? All right, John? All right, citizens to be heard, I assume there's no city manager report?
There aren't any.
Okay. Citizens to be heard, we have a few people that have signed up to speak. I'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Michael Hinton? And of course, we will need your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. I'm Michael Hinton, 1729 Northwest Third Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I come this morning to address a concern that could have serious portent at city and state level, more so concerning the city of Oklahoma City. That concern is the planned erection of a seven-foot bifurcated sickness stature next to the Ten Commandments monument on the grounds of the Oklahoma State Capitol. The past week, I consulted with members of the state legislature and they concurred with me that this is a potentially dangerous message being sent, especially to the youth of Oklahoma City as well as the state of Oklahoma. I prepped an essay or speech that I'll be delivering in many places that in my protest of what I find to be curiously abrasive and against the principle upon which this nation and Oklahoma was founded. Your honor and counsel, since time is limited at this podium, I brought with me copies of my speech in its entirety to share with you and each member of this council. These copies are at the desk of Ms. Beverly Asbury for distributing and for you folks to read and to keep for your review. Your honor and counsel, I am proud to state, to be a child of God, to be, I'm proud to be an American, and I'm proud to have served honorably and faithfully in the military of the greatest nation on the face of this earth. After having been on this earth for more than half a century, I hold on to the value of faith, honor, integrity, courage, and commitment. Despite having left the military ranks and now being a retired U.S. Marshal, I still hold on to those same values in fighting for the sanctity and the dignity of this city, this state, and this nation. You know, I love the lyrics from country and western singer Aaron Tippin where he states, "You've got to stand for something or you'll fall for anything." In closing, I would like to paraphrase a quote from English poet-essist Edmund Burke, "Evil will triumph when good men and good women sit by and do nothing." I, Michael Hinton, will not sit on the sidelines. Yes, this Michael will take a stand and I will stand up and do something. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Morning. Morning. I'm Liz Scheffey, 3916 Brownwood Lane in Norman, but I do work here in the city. I work for the State Department of Rehabilitation Services and I work with blind and low vision individuals. And for many of those people, public transit is their main or only source to get to work and to any pleasure, you know, shopping, doctor's appointments. And so, I mean, I want to commend the council and embark on trying to improve the system. But I really do see that the extended hours are the main thing that I think we need to concentrate on, so that people can have, work later hours and have a time to be able to go shopping and go out to eat just like the rest of us. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thanks, Liz.
Good morning, I'm Haley Moore. I live at 802 Northwest 15th Street here in Oklahoma City. And I work at New View, Oklahoma, but I'm here today representing the Alliance for Public Transportation. And I wanted to come today and express our gratitude for the attention that you have paid to public transportation. It's very important to me personally because working at New View, a lot of my coworkers are blinder visually impaired, and this is their only means of transportation to and from work and also around the city. So it hits home with working with them, but also as a young professional in Oklahoma City, see a lot of really exciting things happening here right now. And I think that if we don't pay closer attention to public transportation, that could be detrimental to the development of Oklahoma City. And so the Alliance for Public Transportation will be focusing on this upcoming year, the extended hours, like was talked about today in the presentation, Monday through Friday evening services, and, you know, potentially Sunday services as well. So thank you again for your support this past year and we're looking forward to working on this upcoming year. Thank you.
Thanks, Haley.
Good morning. My name's Nidra Ruth. I live at 8508 St. Michael's Court. And I too would like to thank you for the attention you're giving to public transportation. I also work at New View, Oklahoma, and the bus service is our means of transportation that gets us to and from work, entertainment, doctor's appointments, and extending the hours would really help us out a lot. And I must say, I was kind of paying attention to Route Eight because that's the route, the bus that goes by New View, Oklahoma, and it would really help if you could extend those hours too, or, you know, get the frequency. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nidra.
My name is Marissa New. I live in the Summerfield addition, northwest Oklahoma City, on the extreme northwest end of the bus routes. I'm here as a private citizen, taking time off from work, representing the Oklahoma Alliance for Public Transportation as well as the Oklahoma Health Equity Campaign. Both are coalitions and both are very supportive of public transportation. And both also, and you guys are going to be receiving your hands, have adopted position statements addressing public transportation and its impact on our health. And I just hope that you guys will review that position statement and again, look at the many reasons why we would love to see more available and reliable public transportation in Oklahoma City and throughout the state. I just wanted to come today to bring to your attention not only the health benefits that we can all receive from public transportation services, but also to hope that we can still seek out dedicated funding, identifying some dedicated funding sources for public transportation for the long term. The city of Bartlesville is actually looking at a hotel motel tax to support their bus route, and they've done some amazing work as a coalition, a public transportation coalition for the last three to four years. So they are actively bringing that to the attention of the city and hopefully they're going to go to a vote for that kind of support in August. So we're, just wanted you guys to be aware of that. Also, I just want to state that I really appreciate the last few years, all the attention that the city has provided to us in looking at health issues and improving the health of our citizens here in Oklahoma City, but also to the raised attention that we have had for public transportation. Again, Dr. Shadid, appreciate you, appreciate Mayor, everyone on the council for everything that you've done to support. I do see we are making, you know, incremental improvements to what we're providing to our citizens, but I would like to be one of those choice riders. I do use the bus on occasion to come down to some of the events on the weekend and at night, grabbing a ride back at night, but I would love to have the ability to come back on the bus to where I live. But I still, you know, I leave my car at that one location at Mercy Hospital and I sit there waiting for the bus and there have been times where I've waited 30 minutes and there's still no bus. Luckily, I have a car that I can get into and make it on time to meet up with people. But I just have that horrible fear and I feel for the people that day to day, they don't know if they're going to make it to work on time or whether or not they're going to have a job. So again, I really appreciate everything that we are doing and all of you are doing to support public transportation and the health issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Felix Aquino. I live at 1308 Meach Circle in Moore. I'm also Vice President for Academic Affairs at Oklahoma City Community College, but I'm here as a private citizen supporting the Alliance for Public Transportation. Last Friday, I had the pleasure and honor of participating in our graduation ceremony where we celebrated 2,000 degrees and certificates that we conferred that year. That's 2,000 lives transformed through teaching and learning. Our current surveys indicate that between 10 and 15 percent of our students do not have private transportation. That is, they rely exclusively on public transportation to get to the college. On a yearly basis, that's between 2 and 3,000 people. And we are very, very appreciative of the recent changes that resulted in a doubling of the service to the college, and that can only have a positive impact. However, at present, there is still a group that is excluded from studying with us. Those are people who have day jobs and lack private transportation. They cannot come to study with us because our night classes end at eight or 8:30 and bus service ends at 7:30. So I would strongly urge you to consider extending the bus service hours. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Felix. Marla Lobo?
Good morning. My name is Reverend Marla Lobo. I live at 7421 Northwest 106th Street. I pastor a United Methodist Church at the intersection of Broadway Extension and Hefner Road. Also through my work in the United Methodist Church and the ministry, specifically with the Education and Employment Ministry team and Skyline Urban Ministries, and I also work with voice, voices organized, and civic engagement, I work with many individuals and families who are economically marginalized, who either completely depend on public transit or partially depend on public transit. If you go to the neighborhood immediately across the street from my church, what you will find is you will find one person getting in the car and going to work, and that is the only car and the only means of transportation that they have. I am here today to ask you to seriously consider extending the hours of the bus service to run in the evenings. I have heard over and over again from the clients at Team and Skyline and working in the neighborhoods that extended hours would provide more employment opportunities for the families that live there and the individuals that live there. And I realize that the fare box is a fairly low percentage, but I think there are more economic measures that may not be so easily quantified that not only will it improve the lives of those families by having extended service and more opportunities, it really increases the well-being of our whole city. Thank you.
Thank you, Marla. All right, and with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming today.